Welcome. February sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Town of Selma Town Council Meeting One here in the Jernigan Building. We are crossing over the six P M mark. We've got a not-too-hefty agenda, maybe what about a forty-minute agenda this evening? Let's see what we got.
Good seeing you.
Fifteen, ambitious, I like it. Hey, first, though, we've got some very important folks with us today to join us for this meeting. In the case, we've got Reverend Dr. Eric. Branch Chapel Church, Eric serves as the senior pastor there. He's on board directors for the Free Will Baptist Children's Home. Bill's president of the Carolina Bible Institute, secondary at high level. Been resident in Johnston County his entire life, went to Selma Elementary School. Smithville Summer Middle and High School. Married to his wife Lisa Fitzgerald, married, and has three wonderful children. Here on this school, she's our mom. Reagan's daughter is attending Mount Olive University, becoming an elementary school teacher. His oldest son Logan is just graduated from Norah Johnston and plans to go into well. And his youngest son Jackson is. Come on up to the microphone, and if you would, tell us about your church a little bit, tell us about where you are. You'd be honored to have an education.
Awesome, thank you, and I thank you for this honor to be able to come and be a part of this. It's a great honor for me to stand before you and you representing Selma in all the different aspects. Branch Chapel is located just outside of Selma. We have been a part of the community since eighteen ninety. This is where our church was established, and we've have served in a lot of different capacities. We have, we love Selma, we love the folks here, we have a lot of our residents who are in town. And so we have a very mutual connection there. We try to do as much impact and outreach as we can. We help, try to help Selma Elementary and with their backpack buddy program. And then, of course, whenever Selma has any kind of events, we like to try to be a part of it, just to get the word of God out there. So we thank you, and if any of you are here and don't have a church, we'd love to have you at Branch Chapel. We're growing for the Lord, twenty twenty-five, that's our motto, so thank you, thank you. Amen, thank you. Dear heavenly Father, we love you and we thank you for this blessed privilege to come tonight and assemble ourselves. And Lord, take care of the business here in this community. Lord, I just thank you for the citizens of Selma and their, their, their deep respect and love for this community and how they want to see it prosper and grow in the name of Jesus Christ. And so, Lord, we thank you for this privilege to come and open up this council meeting and a word of prayer and be able to share about you. Lord, we just pray now for the leadership of this council. Lord, all of the members and staff who make up this, these departments and different areas. Lord, we pray that you would just move on them with wisdom, discernment, knowledge, understanding, compassion, and love for their citizens. Lord, I know that their task and their duties are sometimes overwhelming. And, Lord, I pray that you would just bring peace and patience and help them during these tough and difficult times that we live in. Lord, we do pray for the future of Selma, and we do pray, dear Lord, that you would have your hand upon this community and upon this town. And, Lord, that they would prosper and grow. We thank you for the wonderful things that we're seeing. And, Lord, again, we just thank you that we have this blessed privilege to come and honor you with the word of God. So, Lord, I do pray that these who are here in attendance know Jesus. And, Lord, if they don't, let them come and hear the word of God at a Bible preaching church. Lord, bless this time of meeting, have your hand upon it, and we're going to give you all glory and honor and praise. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Amen, thank you again, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We have another very special guest here with us today to lead us in our pledge. We've got Dilmar Ramos Ramo. Selma Elementary School student, fourth grade. Third grade. So that means you've got a couple more years to rock.
Hey, she promoted him.
That's right, he's been promoted, he didn't know. Very smart, you get fantastic grades, you're always kind, always willing to help, and you've got the greatest smile that a lot of these folks have ever seen, that's the word on the street. Come on up, if you would, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and you can start whenever you're ready, if everybody turn and face the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us into taking a look at the agenda we have for this evening. Counsel, any additions, subtractions that we see that we want to make? And then, staff, are there any additions, subtractions that we see that need to be made as we get going into this thing?
Seven eight. I compared the new one with the last one the last month, there's no changes. I'd like to pull it again. I went for word for word, there's no change.
We pulled it because we didn't have Ms. Watson here. Was there some changes we noted that we wanted to make?
We did, and I have copies of those as well, they're not in there.
Did we know, do we know, well, let's get down to it, and actually, let's recap the actual changes that we wanted to make because I'm not sure if I remember what those changes were. But, in fact, we also, I guess, need to maybe take a peek back at whatever information you have, Dalton, and see if there's anything that we know of. But let's recap those changes as we look at it, and then we'll discuss if we want to make changes from there. I don't personally remember any, but we'll take a look at it. What else do we have? All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda we have in front of us?
Certainly.
Any discussion otherwise? All those in favor?
Aye.
Got ourselves an agenda, and again, let's make a note to get the.
Still make my markings, the nay, thank you.
You don't want to approve it?
I do want to put, I do not want to approve that, no.
Okay, so that's one nay, the rest, yea to approve the agenda. And then, with that note, we do need to make sure that we have a deep discussion of what changes we think need to be made to the welfare check policy. All right, and that brings us to a consent agenda that has the approval of minutes from open forum of August ten. We've got a special council meeting September sixteenth. We've got town council meeting one from January nine and town council meeting two from January fourteenth. We've got a surplus of some administrative items, it looks like some cabinets and the like in there. And then, we've got a position control update, I think, some things to make sure that we are within statute are in that position control update. We've got a consent agenda before us, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Circle.
Any discussion about the consent? All those in favor?
Aye.
Got our consent agenda rolling, and now we've got some discussion and presentations. A twenty twenty-four Police Department Annual Report. Chief Hughes, if you want to take that away, just kind of hit the highlights of what we're looking at all year, but it's good for us to know how our year went.
Yes, sir, it's like your mayor, it's like your council. The biggest thing we're seeing from this is the rapid growth of change as far as the people, influence of people coming into our town. Basically, we went from twenty twenty-three and fifteen thousand, seven people were called, to seeing twenty-three thousand eighty-three calls for the year. Which was a huge change. The one thing we're noticing, when we look down at the accidents, but let me, let me step back, citations. We charged twenty-three hundred and forty-six citations this year to try to help with traffic-related accidents and problems. We still seen an increase of four hundred and twelve accidents from three hundred and two the year before. So we're seeing more and more vehicles coming into our town. Everything else stayed very similar. We did have rash of break-ins here and there. A lot of those, what we're dealing with is against juvenile. We had a little gang of juvenile that got together and breaking at the doors and broke into a few houses. A lot of times, they rattle one or two trucks together. So that is one of the places that we seen the increase. All in all, I'm very proud of the work that our guy, I mean, that's based off of these numbers.
Very cool.
Don't sell yourself short, I still like the drug violations increase.
Yes, sir, drug violations as well. We actually. Year before was a hundred and nineteen, this year was two hundred and ten drug violations that we actually charged. D L V I is another thing, we did drop one sixty, we did sixty-three this year and sixty-four last year, but there's still a lot of D L V I that we're taking off the road.
Let me just make sure we highlight that number again. Calls for service, two thousand twenty-three, fifteen thousand seventy-four. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-three thousand sixty-three.
Eighty-three.
I'm sorry, eighty-three.
Yes, sir, twenty-three thousand eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
Fifty-three percent.
That's a reminder of where we are in our community right now. Everybody understands that there's more coming. I think that is part of our discussion with this budget, that priority is making sure we have the appropriate police force to take on what is headed in our direction.
Yes, sir, we do.
Counsel, we have anything else?
Awesome job.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Rock and roll, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up, we've got a little conversation about what's happening in the fire part.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I'll be glad to answer any questions, I think y'all had this, and hopefully had time to look at it, I'll just highlight some information. We've had a twenty twenty-four had a nine percent increase, which has been fairly steady for the past five years. Eight, ten percent of the past five years. In twenty-four, we responded to fifteen hundred and fourteen responsible emergencies. Just to give you some data, in twenty-two thousand seven, here I start, I think we're at four hundred calls. So it's a big increase when you look at over a long time. After we got this report, and I would say like that, maybe get a little more data from countywide. We still have a forty-two second average in route time, which is number one in the county. Forty-two seconds from a dispatch to the tires rolling, that's where your time's made. We still have a four-minute twenty-two second average spot assignment, and that is the entire district, including the rural district. Some long rides, so. And a hundred and seventeen overlapping calls, that's so important enough. That's when you do not have an engine ready for, for initial response. Okay, we have one engine in service, staff at all times, so we're looking for that for the next budget year, talking about one more so we can put two units in service, twenty-four seven. Let's see, measurement standards, that's a pretty important, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we came to you with our strategic plan. And now that we've got, you know, about a year and a half of that data, we can actually show you some measurables. We're meeting most of our goals, I won't go through all of these, I will hit the ones that we're failing on. Five-minute on-scene time, ninety percent of the time, we're missing that mark by a little bit, we're at eighty-two percent. Fifteen firefighters, and this is my most important one, fifteen firefighters on the scene of a structural fire within ten minutes, ninety percent of the time. We're missing that mark, we're at eighty-one percent, we need some more staff, we need, you know, more mutual aid coming into us, they're staffing as well. Overlapping calls by second unit within two minutes, we're way underperforming on that, thirty-eight percent. Our training hours, the things that we can handle with what we got, we're nailed. Turnout time, that's completely on our guys, ninety-one percent of the time, we're meeting that mark. This one's a hard one to do until we get a training facility in our district, but we are meeting the mark of eighteen hours of facility training. Ninety percent of the time, and two hundred and forty hours of training for our career firefighters, that's a hundred percent. And that goes directly to, it's in a hundred hours for our volunteer firefighters, which is about half of what we need, they all need two forty, but we're meeting that at a hundred percent. Public contact contacts for fire prevention are through the roof, and we are about where we need to be on annual inspections, but we are, well, I'd say we're probably about half of where we need to be, we don't do that in a percentage. That's fell off a little bit this year with our part-time inspector, taking some more time, so. Any questions I can answer for you guys?
We have started the process for a second fire station, we have a second engine one on the floor, second first-out engine on the way. What is the timeline there?
So the second station is still probably about, we're in a long process with U S B A. We hope to have that completed in March, then we can bring that to y'all to move forward. It's probably going to be about a, with the days' time, it's about an eighteen-month build time, so we're looking at what, play twenty-six? The new engine that we had to order ahead, we still don't have a timeline on that. I know we told y'all two years, we're about to hit two years, and we still do not have even a preview time given that. That's a, that's a industry-wide issue.
Well, the blessing with that is thankfully planning ahead.
That's right.
We have a station and an engine that arrive around the same time.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic, and again, does that second station, second engine kind of mitigate some of the things we're missing?
Absolutely, it gives two, two problems. You know, one is that second, and number two is the railroad tracks. If you've ever, you're going to lunch right here, and you want to get McDonald's, and you wait for that, that train every day around lunch, that is a time that you cannot get a fire engine to one side or the other.
And I think, I think Ron has to nail the perfect timing on the, the siren headed out of the station. I don't know if you planned that chief or not, but rock on.
No, we didn't, we didn't, we did stage call.
Any other questions for chief, this information? Hey?
Thank you, amazing.
I'm going to give you a short update on water and sewer next, if that's okay, just goes. Valuable, valuable information in, in the waters first. Currently, we're producing seven hundred thousand gallons per day with an average use of six hundred and fifty. I hope that scares you as bad as it scares me. But there's a plan in place, we're about a past year and a half, we've been working, trying to get, you know, the funding scheme. We've got some of those appropriations for the twenty-two budget, that is working on that problem. We're about to put in five wells, or we've already done, we did five test wells, one op's no good, so we're going to have four, which should bring us up about another half a million gallons, okay? The second project is the Eastfield area, there's going to be two new wells over there with a storage tank totaling all, we should be around one and a half million within a two- to three-year timeframe. So the plan is to get there, but you know, that comes with growth. We're, we're purchasing approximately ninety thousand gallons per day, that is, I don't want that, that to scare you too bad, that is not just we're short and we're having to buy ninety thousand, we have some areas, our outline areas, Camp Ground Road, Lizzie, that are on county lines that we're purchasing every day. And currently, until Eastfield, that line gets completed, we're purchasing that to just do regular sales, not to supplement. So that number ain't quite as scary as it looks. Yeah, two and a half, three years, and the two projects we talked about for water in sewer. Currently, we're allocated one point four three million gallons per day, and we're using one point one oh two gallons of daily usage. So we're in pretty good shape, we've got about a hundred and ninety-three thousand gallons to spare. That's going to get heated really quick, in the next little while, with just the growth that's on the books. Nick has taught me a word called paper flood. We promised it, we're not using it yet, that's more than a hundred and ninety-three. So in this next budget year, as we, you know, develop these sewer development fees, y'all just passed on a couple of months ago, those types of things will be charging sewer capacity fees for new construction. Those, those dollars will go toward, especially sewer capacity fees, they will go to purchasing more capacity, so we should be in good shape. The amount we can can buy, we're in good shape.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Are we still hauling sludge?
Yes, annually. Sometimes I walk sixty-six months by anyways. A few projects that are in place. The C B G project, it's run over a lot of areas in this side town, it's kind of bumpy, that's good. They always talks about dirt movement, there's dirt movement, that's a large project to replace a lot of lines, our sewer lines. That one's almost completed, I believe, in March, should be, that should be completed, and you see some paving over those projects. And that covers the southeast quarter of the town in, in different places. We haven't got our letter of intent to fund, but we did get a two-million-dollar grant. They were expecting that letter anytime to do the state mandated lead copper inventory and replace a lot of that lead copper. And we are in the midst of the very beginning stages of looking at a brick grant to replace the shortfall in C D B G, the one we just talked about. That project was initially about four thousand feet, and due to, we hit it at a terrible time with inflation and the bidding and all that stuff that went on through twenty-two and twenty-three, the, we had to reduce the scope, so we're hoping to be able to apply brick to do all of that, extend all those manholes, and upgrade two different lift stations that are really purpose on high and high. The Brad Wilson Lift Station, it's what we're calling the Brad Project, that lift station, you see, is your first turn into Brad Wilson. That one is funded and is designed to be replaced and relocated, it's going to be moved a little bit out of the flood zone, and be completely built from the ground up brand-new, and the one that's on Camp Ground Road, just on the other side of ninety-five, that will be rehabbed, that project. And Eastfield is in the process of installing a few lift stations and more to come with industrial side.
And bear in mind, those lift stations will actually belong to us, they are being built by the Edgwick Development Group with an development agreement that we do have, so those will be public lift stations that are being built by a private entity. Make sure we can all keep it moving in the towns.
Anything else I can ask? Mr. Shutz can come up and talk about it later, because I don't want to talk about it.
Thank you, thank you.
Cool guy. I didn't know I knew, knew response. Good evening.
Good evening.
I won't go through this whole thing, we prepared it to give you the highlights. One thing I would like to start with, I did, didn't think about it, wasn't asked, and I didn't think about it, which is a good thing, but our outage times, I guess we've had so few here lately. Shouldn't have done that. I neglected to put those numbers up there, but right before this, I did look into it, and a large outage, which we consider to be more than fifty meters, was limited to under four hours, so throughout the year. So that was, that was, felt like a big win for a lot of tree trimmer and staff who've done.
How long did it take you guys yesterday when they cut a line over in the Edgburgh area to get that back on?
About three and a half.
It's an underground line they cut?
Quite, quite a little bit digging happened down there.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I wouldn't tell people to hit that.
No, 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 yeah, that's contractor, contractor did that.
Everybody in white trucks is telling.
Yeah.
It's always one of my guys. So I would, to get started with this, the big thing is our peak usage for twenty twenty-four was sixteen megawatts, that's like the, the highest day, the highest usage we had as a whole town across the board. We definitely expect that number to go up in twenty twenty-five, which is no good news. Right now, we can withstand about sixty kilowatts of usage, a lot, a lot of growth coming, real excited about that. We are able to run the whole town on one single substation with, or one single transformer with about half of that. So worst-case scenario, we are still looking good on low growth. Other things we're looking at, we have some substation upgrades in mind that will give us, I can click a button and get these numbers, which would be real nice, we'll be able to maintain our, across the board, low growth and everything. Outage time, we'll get a little bit quicker with that as well, we'll be able to do some remote access, so the minute we ride out of line, that's, you know, outage calls, we can do that from where we sit, not running back to the substation and waiting in traffic, all that. Any other questions for me about electric, so I don't go too down the rabbit hole of electric talk?
Maybe this is a good time we throw in our meeting from yesterday?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So just so you know, we had an Electric City meeting yesterday about, we found out yesterday that the money that they're supposed to be paying us back, it's not money, it's credit. We found out yesterday, there's no money involved, it's going to give us credit. However, the board, we rejected it yesterday, so they got to go back to the board and come back with another plan of which one we think we ought to be, which level. And my, my suggestion that there in Selma can get, not the highest price, not the highest interest, but the best we can get them. So that's why the board's going back to, going to send it back to George's, I mean, Mr. Shutz will board it to take a look at the, the figures again and come up with something different.
We have any questions otherwise for Mr. Shutz? That's rocking and rolling, man.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Let's see here, we got some business items to look at, so yeah, let's do, talk about this welfare check policy. What were we looking at to change on that?
First of all, we, we made several comments last week, especially about the older people with medical conditions that we wanted, I wanted to see something put into this, and it did not get put in there either. So someone that's got a machine at home, and I know that if they, if they run out, they can't make their payments and stuff, they cut the power off, and I understand that as well, but they can't go thirty days for somebody goes out and checks on them because they got medical equipment. Now, what I'm asking is, is those people will actually make sure that they have a contact within our records that someone can call them to make sure this person is not sit out there live just to die because they don't have electricity. That didn't get put in there either, so. The, the thing about the police department would be notified to go out after thirty days, and I mean, that's kind of late too, as far as I'm concerned. If you've been out of power for thirty days and it's, it's minus twelve degrees, someone's going to be in trouble. I think that we shouldn't wait for thirty days to actually send someone out to check on. This was all brought up the last time we had a meeting and talked about it. But I, I took the one that we got in our, in our agenda today, and the one we had in the last agenda, and it's absolutely no changes whatsoever. I went line for line, highlighted what's in mind, and this one, this, that I had in the old one, that's not in the new, so.
But you know, on this, on this way up for problem here, we tabled because Susan was here and said she has some, some she want to put in. So that's why we didn't discuss it, but we were going to discuss it tonight.
Yeah, we, we were going to.
So that, that was what we were saying, when Susan got her thoughts in on what she would do.
So whatever changes we think we want to make, we do need to make.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think probably my biggest thing was that Chip would give us some guidance on our liability, if something did happen to someone, if we have all this written down that we're going to do and we fail to do it, then what about our liability for that? And also the fact that under scope, we've got utility disconnection, we've got electricity, gas, and water. Gas was a question for me, I don't know. Okay, so that probably shouldn't be in there, correct?
Well, I would say that if we do ever service gas at any point in time for any reason.
Okay, but if you're seeing gas here, and somebody runs out of gas and we don't know it, are we setting ourselves up there for somebody to say, well, you said you checked on if they ran out of gas? So how would we know, because we're not servicing it, see what I'm saying?
So if we were to come across and find. So if we were to come across and find out that the gas was disconnected, I would hope that we would still check on it.
Sure, I mean, you would hope, but how would we know?
So i- if we don't know.
Electricity and water we know about.
So i- if we don't know, of course, we don't know, but if we get information that, hey, in fact, a lot of neighbors, uh, will come to me when somebody has had a hard time and their utilities have been cut off.
Right.
And they will tell me such and such's utilities have been cut off. So if there's a possibility that somebody's utilities are cut off, that their electric and water is still on, but somebody says, hey, such and such's gas is still off or has been turned off. By policy, still, we are aware now.
Right.
We're going to go check on it.
But do you want to put that in there because you're saying that this policy applies to all residents who meet the following criteria? So if you're saying that their gas is cut off, and we may not know their gas is cut off, but you said that if it's cut off, we're going to check on them. So I'm, I don't know, I'm just a little leery of the wording there.
So do you think we should just take out gas and then say, hey, we still understand that if we find out somebody's gas is off, we'll check?
That's kind of the way I think of it, that I, I was going to kind of refer to Chip about how, what he thinks about that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, really, at this point, there is no policy. So we're sort of under the reasonable man standard, but what a reasonable person do. And you got a situation, and I understand the intent of this, obviously, the captain here, elderly, to say. Um, I would say to the, to the council, if it's a utility we don't provide, we have no way to monitor it. So I wouldn't inherit that obligation on the gas, I think that's a good idea. A legislative order, I think, you know, we can monitor it. The only thing I think to be cautious of is how far does this new imposed duty go up on the town to be like your, your guardian check person? Hopefully, the family would do it, somebody's calling, you know, checking on these people. But we don't want it to get into a position where it's implied that, hey, we're there and we're your backup. We don't want to get that.
Yes, that's my think thought too.
I agree with that.
If I got a family person, if I'm not worrying about it, why should I expect the town to suddenly worry about it, you know what I'm saying? If you don't think of your person to take care of yourself or warn somebody about it, why, you know, say, we're sending a check on person for me.
So we've never had a written policy before, so do we just need to do?
Make sure, I don't believe so, ma'am.
Yeah, so would it be smart to just do what we've always done and just know that we're going to check on these people, but we're not going to put it in writing? Hold ourselves some kind of standard? I mean, I just kind of think that might be the best thing.
Yeah, if you, I think if you put something out, we're going to be accountable for it. So, I, I'm sorry, but someone with a medical and has a machine that keeps them alive and you don't have electricity for it to run, I still believe that's an open door for a lawsuit.
We, a couple of things, we still have an immunity argument, arguably. We do have insurance though, so then you say, well, we waived immunity to the degree of our insurance. Um, so tho- both of those arguments could be made. Um, but I think the policy, um, does create an obligation on the town of go check on me.
Right.
Yes, up to the council, but, uh, if it's a policy, we've got to do it.
But you know, I've, I've heard a lot of these welfare checks come across the news, it's always that, my mom is, I haven't heard from her something. They would go check on it, but it wasn't anything like, you were responsible to go out and check on my mom if I hadn't kind of reported to somebody? That's what, every time you hear on the news, they say they were there because of welfare check, so such a person called in in for a welfare check. It's not like the police was obligated to go out and check on your mama if nobody called and said anything about it, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So we think it might be safer to not have an actual policy in place at all?
Who, uh, we did it come?
Yeah, wha- what was the genesis of the conversation, do you remember?
Uh, one of these coal slabs, we were advised to have like a check on complete.
Oh, yeah. Ah, yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right.
And, and, and let me, if you don't mind, let me, let me add something that is not a policy and you may or may not be aware of. This recent January, Portwood, that's another thing, but when he got his shrink. When we ran into a cutoff, you know, decision was made, it's hold on, we cut both our oil, yes. You know, just because the deal was out, because, you know, it's so zero, it's so freezing temperatures. And that actually went on, and it's kind of scary, it went on for like two weeks because it stayed cold so long. And I know that delays, you know, folks to have a better bill, just to keep, keep higher, but not cutting this, so. So this is not like, we lost power yesterday to go check. These are for these long term, and, and, and look, this, this is, I don't know, but these are for these long terms, I hadn't had power for three months. Uh, you know, they're just, they're just not paying their bill and let it go, and, uh, that's one of the reasons, one of the checks. Now, whether there's a policy or not, you know, making something all good, if I could choose, you can always like call them out, I think welfare check. I had a verbal statement that, that is just a response, correct, that's just a response. So that, that could continue to happen.
That's the only thing that, um, familiar with, um, I think if we put this in writing, we have definitely. We've put something in writing, and if anything were to happen, you know, how it goes sometimes. And to me, I don't think this is necessary. There was a one ins- incident here, somebody called, and we called and got a welfare check on this person. And sometimes, that's, it's your neighbor, it's your family. So do we make a motion to?
I, I would say that we, uh, just say, we were not, we're not going to vote on it, but at the same time, um, maybe have con- conversation internally with staff, police department on how you intend to handle things, but it, it is probably wise not to have it voted in as policy for us to, uh, make official as far as the town.
But can, can we take, we do have a list of people that are on medical.
So yes, sir, the medical seal program that you mentioned earlier, that's what it's always been called policy. And finance could give us, because she's out sick, give a little better answer, I could. Uh, there is a procedure, and I do not know the exact, there is a procedure for someone to get a form filled out from a doctor, it's called a medical procedure. It does not stop you from getting your power, you've got to pay your.
Yeah.
But it does put the first priority, it does give them some phone calls, it would give, you know, be, if I didn't pay my, but it gives them some extra. Deals to you as you pay.
But I just don't want to lose this, I mean.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right, so we, we've got that option for them, um, and it's, and we got that hill. You know, that they, we disseminate that like during, you know, the national disaster going through, different folks, um, you know, if we lose power for a tremendous amount of our person. You know, we may or may not be able to help with shelters, generators and things like that, it's, it's what's available, that process is.
Okay.
And I'd say what we'll do the next, just make that, we'll get that procedure out maybe in the next, uh, tracks, uh.
Yeah, just tie that, programs in place.
And cer- certainly, again, the staff can hold on to this as tacit policy, but it, I don't think it should be official policy as far as. Take, uh, nothing, no action. And, and with that being said, so your comment about the change is not being made, I think it was the temperature of all of us that, hey, heard questions, and the rest of us were kind of like, eh, this is where we're headed.
I, I'll take that and, and I'll already send my no vote to a yes vote.
With my men, my men. All right, so no action on that, but certainly something fantastic for us, staff, staff and us to think about and consider for, for our citizens. Um, bylaws, commissions, Selma Planning Board, what do we got going on there?
Stop. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Um, so as you'll see in the agenda, there is a presented amended bylaws for the planning advisory board. Um, it has been extremely efficient and beneficial just to have the five member board. And by statute, we're only required to have three, so just to prevent from having to fill these additional vacancies, we're presenting to have a five member board rather than seven. Makes sense to me. Questions coming?
There's, um, there's some, um, calculation we're supposed to use about the, um.
About a forum?
No, about the number of people that live inside town, number of people that live outside town and.
We do have, um, still one E T J member present on this board, so I believe that that satisfies that.
And it satisfies it, okay, as long as that's satisfied, I think. We're okay, couldn't remember off the top of my head what I was thinking about.
Other questions?
There's one time you had to, right?
It was a bigger board.
Bigger board, yes, yeah. I'm good.
Do we have a motion to approve these amendments to Chapter Two, Division One, bylaws governing Selma planning?
Selmo.
Second.
Any discussion further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Cool, what do we have next?
It is the request to dissolve the tourism advisory board. This was drafted at, at the request of council.
Any background at all there that was really from our side, so?
That was, um, lack of interest within the community, and there are other municipalities in the county that do have the same interlocal agreement with the visitors bureau for tourism funds. So there is an alternative to keeping that program without having this board as well.
Well, any questions there beyond about tourism? Do I have a motion to approve the repealing of Article Two, Division Six, bylaws governing Selma tourism advisory?
Selmo.
Second.
Any discussion further?
So they would like the liaison between us and, um, Donna Bailey Taylor's organization, is that kind of?
It's a very weird history. So if I remember correctly, it started off as we had specified in the bylaws that a member from Wayne's, a member from the hotel, John, uh, Donna Bailey Taylor, Johnson County Visitors Bureau was on the board. And, and we specified particular people, particular businesses to be on. That kind of fills it apart because those business members particularly were too busy and just didn't come. So then we had a period where I think we had like a Parks and Rec staff on the board. There was a council member on the board at one point, um, that kind of fills apart because again, folks take up. Um, so then we kind of changed it to where it's business owners and residents. And even now, you know, we're not seeing results from having a tourism advisory board. And it was something unique to Selmo, no other community has a tourism advisory board for the, uh, conversations about Johnson County Visitors Bureau dollars. And quite frankly, it has ended up costing us more money than it has actually helped us do anything related to tourism.
So now how will we have, um, interaction with the tourism authority of here?
Staff. Staff, staff, staff.
We're, we are the only town with no, I mean, none of the other town, not to say we really care what they do, but it's, it's been kind of troublesome.
It's, uh, we, we've had, you know, it's certainly when you have to call a meeting, there's time consumption there, and then there's staff time that turns into dollars. And we've had some instances where, quite frankly, decisions out of the board were made and mistakes were made and it had to be cleaned up. So it's been more dollars to do things. And, um, I, I think that staff has been incredibly capable in communicating with the Johnson County Visitors Bureau, and that added layer is just unnecessary. Got a motion and a second on the table, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
One name, please, I just don't.
I understand, yeah, one name, councilman wants. All right, moving right along, uh, advisory board recom- recommendations, we got, uh, more from recre- uh, recreation, they are rolling. Uh, Harrison Gym banners. Nice little graphic right here, so these are banners that, uh, Recreation Advisory Board wants to put over the windows that are in Harrison facing the south side of Harrison, because when the sun hits a certain point during the day and sports are happening, it is not pleasant for our athletes. Yeah, so, uh, you know, there's conversation, I think, about getting the windows tinted at one point, putting, uh, curtains at one point, but then we realized, uh, we had this banner already in there that was a little bit larger than the window, and that would be a nice display uh, for the inside of, uh, Richard P. Harrison, Williams Davis Gymnasium.
Put the, put the light in, we have enough light, but of course, the light is about.
That's right, and of course, the windows on the other side still let light in without blinding everybody. So he could, graphics that would be put up there, I am very impressed with the Q R code. It's actually on the banners, so that when you're sitting in the, uh, gym, you can take a picture of that and look at our Parks and Recreation Program. Thanks staff for a lot of time in polishing this, and thank you very much, I know Natalie, you had a lot to do, put this together, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Look sharp.
Those look sharp. Does, do I have a motion to approve these Harrison Gym banners?
Second.
Any discussion further?
Um, is the price already covered and within the budget?
Budget? All right, motion's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's what I was saying too about, as anybody citizen, walk around and you see something, just like this, in this gym. Years, I mean, said, yeah, sun coming through the windows and all this and that, and somebody just observed and said, hey, we got banners over there, getting those sparks. A no brain of a thing about it, that's what you know, that somebody's got, sees things that some people don't see. You don't know what you don't know, and this person saw this, that's why I got so many million and I take a weed eater. How many people thought about that? Look at who's what happened. So this was somebody just having, thinking, seeing things like that, say, hey, because we have complained about being in that gym, and wondering how these guy could see anything with sun coming through. And I just put a banner there, and it looks good, it's sad, and you say, well, never thought about this for kicking the sun out, but that's what, that's what it's all about. But you got banners now, so you showing us the.
We got staff in the camps, that makes a big difference. All right, event sponsorship policy, and we had put it back down to Parks and Rec advisory because we had found out that they had not seen these last two policies. I think they have taken a close look at them and they're good with them.
Sure, sure.
So the event sponsorship policy, do we need any more information on it? We have seen it already.
Phil, I just asked one question, did we decide to do something for business downtown? Or was windows?
So stickers, yes, sir.
Okay.
We, we need to write in policy.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the event sponsorship policy?
Selmo.
Second.
Any discussion otherwise? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then the athlete scholarship policy, which is also something we put it back down to make sure Parks and Rec Advisory Board pick through it with a fine tooth comb. Um, any questions there for staff? Motion to approve the athlete scholarship policy?
Selmo.
Second.
Discussion further. All those in favor?
Aye.
Got that rolling. Town attorney's report, got anything fantastic?
Well, I think whatever I've got, carry over to, uh, meeting two.
Hey, okay, I'll take it. Uh, council members' report and recommendations, let's, uh, we'll start on the customary mayor pro tem in, and we'll come around.
I don't have anything to say, I just want to say thank you for what was coming out. I don't have anything to say, I just wanted to thank everybody that's coming out, and because just to help people take time out of their schedule to come be with us and discuss things. I appreciate that, so let it never go, you know, not saying that we don't appreciate people showing up in person to these meetings. Of course, we got it online and all that, but still, it means when you're here to get it straight, not going through all the filters from the. Uh different system out there, but now you come here and say, well, I heard Joe Scarborough say that, it's not I heard through this place, that's the person that Joe Scarborough said that. So that helps out, you know.
I just gotta say, I love when Joe doesn't have anything to say. I'd like to welcome our new town manager, I'm looking forward to getting to know you, working with you. Um I don't have a lot to say either, except I'm, I am glad to see you all when you do come to our meetings. And I hope everyone has a good weekend, thank you for coming.
So for several weeks, I've been working on a, a new project that I want to present in March to the council. And it's um, and I don't see it in the capital way improving from twenty sixteen through thirty. Cause I want to see us put in a new department or payment. It's, you know, being able to pave our roads and, and, and hire our own people, doing our own work and our, and our own roads. And I can justify, uh we've sent out for quotes, like five, ten years, twenty years maybe. And uh to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, uh we have not paved our street fully nowhere in town yet. We paved some, but we hadn't fully paved the whole road. If we paved one, we spent probably one or two, right?
Yeah, in, in recent years, yeah, about maybe two, maybe three.
And that's been probably ten, fifteen, twenty years, right?
I would say, in fact, if I, if I count off the top of my head, uh five years ago, we paved three. And then a year and a half ago, we paved two.
So I, I, I think we have a, a great opportunity to look into this and, and, and do it with our, and you're gonna say, first question is gonna come. We gotta take care of the sewage and the road, I got a plan for that as well, that I'll share with you, how we can do that and get the roads paved as, as well. I'm not saying we're gonna pave the whole road at one time, we'll pay a portion of it until we get the whole road. But I'll share that with you in March.
Sounds good, very cool, thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, that brings me, I've got a little proclamation here before me. For All in Red Month, this is something that we do every single year, Mayor Jeff Holt of Pine Level. Tends to lead the charge on this program amongst the municipalities. Um and we have a little friendly competition to see which municipality can bring in the most dollars, so we can talk junk to each other at the end of the month. Um so the proclamation honoring February twenty twenty five is All in Red Month. Whereas the well-being of our community is of paramount importance and maintaining excellent health among our citizens. Is a top priority. February marks the month-long countywide heart health awareness campaign entitled All in Red. Organized by UNC Health Johnston and Johnston Health Foundation. And whereas in the United States, North Carolina and Johnston County, heart disease is the leading cause of death among men and women. And whereas for the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, about eighty percent of deaths from premature heart disease and stroke could be prevented. By changes in physical activity, diet, education and management of common medical conditions. And whereas All in Red is an opportunity to increase heart health awareness while addressing the growing needs of local cardiology patients. And whereas the All in Red Campaign invites all Johnston County residents, business owners and visitors to participate in this initiative. By wearing red on February seven, twenty twenty five, National Wear Red Day. And or running a red promo fundraiser in February. And whereas the financial challenge of a heart patient are enormous, all funds raised within this campaign period. Will benefit local heart patients through the Johnston Health Foundation's Heart Fund. And whereas on February sixth, two thousand twenty five, during regular session, Town of Selma recognizes heart disease and stroke survivors. Those battling the disease, their families, who are their source of love and encouragement. And applaud the efforts of our medical professionals to provide quality care. Now therefore, I, Mayor Byron McAllister and the Town of Selma Town Council do hereby proclaim. February twenty twenty five as All in Red Month. And encourage businesses, industries and citizens in the community to support and participate in this event. Duly proclaim, if approved and adopted, this sixth day of February twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion to adopt and approve this proclamation honoring February twenty five as All in Red?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor? Duly proclaimed, fantastic, so uh we do have a campaign to raise funds in the Town of Selma. And we do want to be able to talk junk to our sister and brother municipalities, so let's go ahead and get those donations in. You can make those at Town of Selma Finance. Yeah.
This means a lot to me right now. And never had before, really. Looking for those symptoms, but Saturday, Saturday night I hit my house. Um I had a, a, a heart issue Saturday night, ended up having a heart attack. I'm good to go, though. But I, you know, our healthcare professionals. I got my truck and I drove to the fire station, cause that's, that's home, the boys had me on a monitor just like this. Uh our EMS jumped into action, had me on a monitor, told me I was in a field. Um took me to Johnston Memorial, not Wake, Johnston. Um I had some of the most professional people, I told them they give me enough drugs, I could have started a drug cartel. And by five o'clock that morning, I was out. I would have never thought I'd say this tonight, but someone told me to say something tonight, so I, I, this is, this is a big deal, you know, you don't run out to the issue.
Glad you hit it, Chip.
Absolutely.
It's a big deal, thank you for that, very cool. Uh otherwise. After that, I don't even want to say. Uh we do have an open forum on, on, on Saturday, that's February eighth at one PM. We are going to concentrate on talking about the budget, so input, input, input. About our upcoming fiscal year twenty six. How our taxpayer dollars are spent. Ooh, chili cook-off at Harrison on Saturday as well, it's at eleven, at eleven, so before we talk about money. Let's get fat, let's get sleepy, and then we'll pile in and start talking about uh budget, all right? We got anything else going on Saturday? Cool, so that's all happening Saturday, uh we hopefully don't have anything for close questions? No, 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 oh, and look at the time, boy. Well, with that, I've got a couple of more speeches that I'd like to note. Do I have a motion to adjourn?